I'll come up after I...
Okay.
This meeting, the common council order, roll call please.
Alderman Horn.
Here.
Byer.
Here.
Peachey.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Brandl.
Here.
Tully.
Here.
Thank you. This time we'll entertain public participation. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so. We ask that you please state your name and address for the record and please come to the podium. Thank you. Anything?
Thank you. Hello, my name is Emmy Reiner. Thank you for having me today. I don't actually live in the city of Jefferson, but I am the chair of the Jefferson County Drug Free Coalition, and I work in Jefferson County as a public health nurse. So, I just wanted to thank you so much for recognizing April, which is next month, as Alcohol Use Awareness Month. We are putting sort of our local spin in it and focusing on alcohol use for younger people, for youth. But just to give you some background about how this campaign started, it's a national campaign to raise awareness about alcohol addiction so that we can reduce stigma around alcohol use disorders so that people can get treatment and recovery services. But, you know, equally important is that we have to work with our youth so that we can send messages about the dangers of alcohol use. And one of the reasons why this is such an important topic is, you know, alcohol is one of the top five most addictive substances that we know of after heroin, methamphetamines, opioids, nicotine. And so, you know, we really have to stay vigilant about this issue. And in Jefferson County, you know, we've done a lot of surveys with youth, and still, the alcohol use is quite high. It's about 30% among high school students. And we want our high school students and young people to have every chance to be able to succeed, and alcohol and drugs don't really play any role in that. We also know that youth, when they start to drink alcohol before the age of 14, they have a 41% chance of having alcohol addiction later in life. And if they wait until age 21, they only have about a 10% chance of having alcohol use disorders. So, it's really important for us to emphasize that it's important to wait to drink alcohol. So, what are we doing as far as in here in Jefferson County and in the city? While we're working with our law enforcement partners who are here today, we're going to do some educational campaigns with the schools, especially around town season because that can be a really high-risk time for youth. And, you know, with alcohol use among young people, drinking and driving is a real concern. We're working to provide some many grants to some of the youth organizations like Jefferson County Connections so that they can have funds to do some alternative drug-free activities. And we're just, as a coalition, we're just trying to promote alcohol use awareness and prevent alcohol use among all members of the community. And hopefully, by the end of this year, we'll have also sponsored an Alcohol Town Hall discussion in the county. So, thank you so much for your time, and I hope to continue to work with you in the future.
Thank you.
Do you have any contact information or anything that's...
Yeah, so, I'm the contact for the Jefferson County Drug Free Coalition. Our email is jeffco dfc@gmail.com. And I can reach at my phone number at (920) 674-7232. And I think, yeah, we also have a Facebook page as well, Jefferson County Drug Free Coalition, for all of our activities and events.
Thank you. We'll just get to that in just a moment, please. Are there any other people that would like to offer public participation? If not, we'll move on directly into our proclamation. The City of Jefferson, 2019 Alcohol Awareness Month. Whereas underage drinking costs Wisconsin nearly $1 billion annually in medical care, missed work, traffic crashes, and pain and suffering; whereas the healthy growth and development of Wisconsin's children requires further reductions in Wisconsin's rate of underage drinking; and whereas in Wisconsin, it is illegal for adults to allow or fail to take steps to prevent underage drinking on property they own or is under their control or to sell alcohol to adolescents; and whereas enforcement of laws against selling, serving, or providing alcohol to underage people combined with parental support and communication can reduce underage drinking; and whereas the Jefferson County Drug Free Coalition will work with youth, schools, parents, and other community partners to support activities that increase conversations about underage drinking among middle and high school students; and whereas the City of Jefferson Police Department will conduct compliance checks at local licensed establishments and rigorously enforce laws against selling or serving alcohol to underage youth; and whereas the City of Jefferson strongly encourages residents to refuse to purchase, provide, or pour alcoholic beverages to underage youth and to take the necessary steps to hold those who engage in this illegal and unhealthy practice to be responsible. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Jefferson not only discourages the use of alcohol by those below the legal age of consumption, but also exhorts all residents to refuse to provide alcoholic beverages to those underage youth and pledges to support the Jefferson Police Department efforts to identify and deter this illegal and unhealthy activity. Now therefore, ideal opperman, Mayor of the City of Jefferson, to hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 as Underage Alcohol Use Awareness Month, dated this, day 21st of March. Thank you, and I'd like to present this to Emmy. And thank you so much for your efforts and the efforts of your organization.
Thanks for coming.
Do we have a...
Well, if you have to hold our press...
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate your work.
Well, thank you so much.
Next, we have a proposed appointment to the city's housing authority. We have a person, a member who is stepping down, Joanne Miller, and has been recommended to me, and I offer for your consideration Gary Thompson as a replacement on the Jefferson Housing Authority. So I would encourage and request motion to approve.
Would like to approve Gary Thompson to replace resigning Joanne Miller for the housing authority.
Good move, sir. Second. Thank you. Second by Alderman Miller in the discussion. All in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Passes unanimously. Thank you, and we appreciate Mr. Thompson's willingness to serve. Next, we'll move on to an update from City Administrator Frank Tagg on the flood prediction outlook for spring of 2019. It's almost over, right? Billy, why don't you go ahead?
Sure, what we're gonna do is, as I'm talking, just have some in the background, some drone footage that was taken by the PD, Mr. Gil Schweck here, so you can take all the credit on this one. But simply just want to give an update to the city council and the city in general just regarding where we're at with the flooding situation in Jefferson. The Rockover Crested over the weekend at 11.5. The current level where it sits today is about 11.0. As an idea, last year, this fall, we get 11.8. So, we are familiar with the areas that typically are gonna flood in this type of crest. As far as the city being prepared, we have some filled sandbanks on hand, and based on the projections and the weather forecast, we do not anticipate any further flooding in the next week or so. I also will say that the projections are based on current forecasts, so obviously, if we do get any rainstorm that's not predicted, they'll certainly project or modify the projections. The other thing we have taken into account is if there's any dams to the north of us that do release some additional water, I mean, a water town will release some additional water today as well. But as far as where we're moving in the spring, we're gonna continue to monitor the situation on a daily basis. We advise the public through our Facebook campaign, we'll have a PD website as well as the city websites. So if case situations change, we'll certainly be keeping an operation to the public here. As far as the dam, the Jefferson Dam is fully open at this time, and I suspect that it is going to remain in that position until water levels recede. And again, what we're doing, if the chief wanted to comment, or possibly Joe, just on the use of the drone and why we're using it, and what kind of tool we're using it for planning in the future.
So, the drone was purchased last year through donations by some of our local businesses. Lieutenant Zoux attending a pilot school right now. He brought a lieutenant from Capitol Police that he trends with, that is a drone operator, actually probably an expert in his field. And Lieutenant Joe took this just this past Saturday at about 11:00. And Lieutenant Joe, why don't you stand up and tell the council what you did, what you find out, give it credit.
One of these videos of the rivers at 11:43 as we go on Saturday. I just flew the drone up and down the Crouppish River to the city limits on the recent treatment plant, and just tried to capture the points where we all know where flooding's a problem, in people's backyards, and public property, and public streets. And then I flew it north to the city limits, all the way to the 265. It's a great tool, I look forward to many more successful flights, and hopefully, we won't have any crashes. But, yeah, I'm learning right now, this is my first flight, and I hope to have my license soon. I'm Norman State Patrol Cavalry, gonna be flying with them for five days, so I should be able to fly through some radiography here and also the flight of the drone, so if it can be used other than this and for city festivals, car show, you know, traffic patterns, we can use it inside if we had some sort of incident at school, and it'll fly in and clear stairwells and rooms and all that sort of stuff. It's really got so much potential for use, and you could think of it...
Now, we're using it right now, Julia's planning tool. What we've asked the PD to do is to be able to document the flooding in different flood stages, anywhere from 7:00 to, you know, 11:30, so that we're able to go back and determine exactly which properties are affected so that we can pre-plan based on these projections and be able to contact. And this last night, what we ended up doing was, based on the events from last fall, we were able to contact some of these residents ahead of time, and we let them know that whether or not their properties are safe based on those projections, and be able to get sandbanks, all of them advanced. So, we've got a pretty good system at this point. Obviously, if things change, where it's a lot higher, and river elevations, things change to a different level of emergency, but at this point, we feel pretty good with where we're at right now with the city.
Here's the thing, we have two months of this. You know, if we took a measurement, you know, this would be a top 10 crest in the history of the community, you know? We had two of those last fall. You know, this is a reoccurring matter in our community. Certainly, you know, we were spared what happened in Odi and in Darlington and other parts of the Midwest. You know, we, you know, those of us that were around in 2008, we feel that pain quite honestly. But what I really can say is that staff, including some that go back to 2008, this just isn't our first rodeo in the world. You know, we've dealt with this, and the police department and the fire department, they have impeccable record-keeping. They know what happens to certain properties when water gets to a certain point, and that's extremely helpful. The most critical thing for us, that the lessons we've learned, is that if there really is a true regional event, or even an upper Midwest event, you better have your materials now, because if it's a widespread enough, you're not getting them, whether it's pumps, sandbags, and things like that. And we're really good about inventorying those things. And what Bill talked about, the House of Corrections team was filling sandbags, and we always like to keep on hand as many sandbags as we can store if we don't need them, if we don't want to fill them or empty them, you know? We have to store them. And the Public Works Department has kind of figured out how to store bags and keep them fresh in case you need them, not now, but at some event in the future. But I would say the community is so much better off than 2008. I don't know, Bill, if you can go back to the treatment plant, you know, I can show you the really good illustration up here, pretty quickly. In 2008, the water was so high that it breached the 100-year broom protecting that plant. You know, we came within a whisker of flooding out that treatment plant. Not a great thing, flood all those pumps and electronics, you're without a plant for maybe five, six months. That's been rebuilt to a 500-year level. The pumps, the electronics have been raised to a 500-year level inside the plant. And most importantly, I think, we didn't have a broom protecting the Public Works Department that was constructed in the aftermath, because we lost the yard. Couldn't use the gas pumps, it was filled up with water. You know, infrastructure-wise, so much better off. The substation's been relocated out of the floodplain. You know, we re-armored, re-rip-reap, you know, blocks that would be dry. We are just so much better off, and we have another set of bridges, that even if you had to close bridges, you did from the north to the south side of the community with the bypass. Relocated, relocated businesses, three of them, out of the floodplain, took down a number of houses that were damaged. So, we are much better off. And probably what happens if there's a really, really big event is we're spending less time protecting our infrastructure, which we really had due in 2008, and really getting help to help people faster than we did in 2008. But it's really helpful just to have experienced people that have dealt with this before. And as I say, this has become, you know, more a common occurrence.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Joe. Appreciate your work, and we look forward to seeing you more. I think that's gonna be a great tool for the community.
I'd like to make a comment. If you look at our city website, Mr. Fennell has all the flood stages and all that information on there, so if people are interested or want to know what's going on, that is all included on our website. So, kudos to whoever is handling that and keeping that updated.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to a presentation about the Legacy Auto Development and North Highway 26, Dollar Plaza Development.
Bill? Sure. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mary. I just wanted to make you aware, a couple developments that come in front of the planning commission recently, and let you guys know what some things are gonna be coming down the pipeline here in front of the council as well. The first development is Legacy Auto Sales. And this is a development that's at the corner of the Watertown Avenue, West Perner Street, and North Main Street. This development is for auto sales by J. Sass. The site includes a 3,250-square-foot building and parking lot. Auto sales, this is the profiles of what the building is going to look like. The final site plan was conditionally approved by the planning commission on February 27th of last month. There was a couple conditions that he had to meet. Those have since been met, and I expect that approval letter will be sent out this week. Construction is anticipated to start as early as April, depending on frost and ground, but I would expect to be able to see some crews moving out there next month. The second one is the Midwest, Midwest Capital Investments Gas Station. This is one that you guys have been very familiar with, and talked quite a bit about. This is up at the intersection, Business Highway 26 and Junction Road in the northeast quadrant of the intersection. We've got, the developments we talked about in the past have been the gas station and drive-through restaurant along with the hotel. Right now, these projects are not moving currently, so what we have been submitted at this point is final site plan approval and a conditionally use for just the gas station, C-store, and drive-through at the, on this property. As you can see, this is gonna be located on the north portion of that property. Stormwater management is anticipated to be on the property south of Junction Road. To give you some ideas of what this is gonna look like, this is a rendering from the engineers as far as what this is gonna look like. There's a BP C-store. We've also been submitted a copy of a similar drive-through restaurant. This is actually from Stevens Point, because they were still working on the rendering, but they are anticipating it to be a Burger King. This final site plan approval and conditionally use we consider next week, March 27th, by the planning commission. Upon approval, as well as a developers agreement that is yet to come in front of the city council, they are anticipating a spring construction on the gas station and the gas station and C-store. And like we said, the site has been designed to accommodate the gas, or the hotel on the south side.
Do you have anything else you want to add on those?
We got them.
Okay. He's gonna move it right along then. Thank you very much. Next, we're gonna have the presentation from Administrator Frank Tagg regarding the redevelopment strategy for downtown and waterfront neighborhoods.
Thank you, Dale. We are nearing the point of starting to spend money on some of the projects that we've been talking about. And in fact, we're gonna propose that we spend some money on engineering for Rockover Land Park tonight. And before we do that, though, I thought I would just give you a status update on four of the projects, and what we've referred to as that rural front in downtown corridor, some of which we think likely are to start in relatively near term. So, that's the corridor we've been talking about. Bill, we'll just do this quick. Why don't you queue us up to the park? So, the update from our last discussion is, I can say that with finality that our stewardship grant has been approved, that we're going to have joint finance committee review procedure. I do have a copy of the contract that will have the execute. Chris looked at it in the last day or so. I would envision that I'd be doing that. Between that source and the other grant source that's been on the other way source, you know, it's in excess of a half a million dollars to pay for the first phase of the park. Bill's gonna talk about retaining an engineer to start design engineering on the first phase of the park tonight, a little later on the agenda. And I would say if things can go forward, we would hope by late summer, early fall, that construction in the first phase of the park can start, and that continues into 2020. The projects in this quarter, generally, I'd be thinking in terms of two years for the most part, because I think that's how long that really takes to get completed. But we'll talk about that in just a little bit. The next project we've been talking about is the repurposing of the former foremost buildings property into housing units by the Gorman Company. The update on that is, really, we were waiting for two things to happen. You had previously authorized the city to submit an application to REDAP for a $250,000 community development investment grant. We did indeed do that, and that has been funded. I do not have the contract documents yet, but I will get that shortly. Proceeds from that grant are to pay for about half of the cost of constructing the levee wall that would remove the property from the floodplain. So, generally, I don't know if you have that budget built. The funding sources for this project, pretty expensive, $10 million from that capital staff, is involving a number of different financing areas. That has been assembled. I mean, everyone feels really good about that, with that last $250,000 piece. The issue that's remaining is, is that FEMA needs to approve what's called a COBON. They have sent an application to remove the property from the floodplain by instructing this for all the engineering that's been submitted last fall. We think we are nearing the end of that process. I think it's gonna happen, quite frankly. It's a matter of when it happens. And as you know, because we've talked previously, those tax credits, you know, have a shelf life. They have a duration. This project will be completed by December of 2021. It is 18 months to repurpose that building from its former main factory used to residential use, but I feel really good about it. I think that last piece is gonna happen. I think Gorman feels very thrilled to get right now. The ideal thing is, we hear in the next 30 days or so, they close on the property late May or early June, and just start the project sometime around July 1st. And then we get that 18 months to prove conversion. I feel really good about that. The next project in that quarter we've been talking about is the Alley Project. Last night, there was a really quick, short visit with the utility commission because, you know, a large component of that project would be a deal with the overhead power that's been fixed during the alley for a long, long time. That's really, really expensive. I think we're probably, I'm guessing, 60 days before the council really can make a decision whether that's the project they want to try to propose to the community development program. So, the next step for us, and Bill has the proposal, relatively expensive, in my opinion, to do the survey of that alley. We talked about that because we're sure we're gonna have title issues. We need to make sure we can beat those issues. And then a good part of it is, the title company has to do quite a bit of research. So, we're gonna talk about that at the next meeting, but that's what I really think is the next step, to undertake the project, decide to throw it right out there, that project. My mind hasn't changed, I think it's doable. It's a heck of a lot of artwork, it's pretty complicated, but that's where that project sits. And then lastly, just to put mention on the Tyson Property. I certainly am not liberty to say too much, other than to say that property is under control and they're willing to purchase of it. control, and we're going to purchase of it in the relatively near term. I'm certainly not going to talk about who or what that is at this point, but, you know, the park is kind of the north end of this corridor, this is the south end of that corridor, and, you know, all these projects kind of tie together, and it's paramount activity. We would hope to undertake in, in that corridor, but it is possible, you know, that there could be, could be some, some, I'll leave it at that, and I'm not going to say anything more than that.
Thank you, Tim. Any more have any questions for Tim than Ken?
I probably said more than I should, to be honest.
Respect the confidentiality of our, of our professionals. Thank you, Tim. Next, we'll move on to Resolution Number One Twenty-two, tonight's consent agenda. All of them tell you, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number One Twenty-two, our consent agenda. A, we have vouchers payable from February twenty nineteen in the amount of $20,696.10 in March twenty nineteen, in the amount of $226,889.85. The payable summary for March fifteenth, twenty nineteen, in the amount of $182,658.74. And B, we have council minutes from the March nineteenth. No, that should be March fifth, twenty nineteen, meetings of the county council. C, we have licenses as approved by the regulatory committee. One, we have one operator's license, that was for Angela Grooms at Casey's, and we had no special Class D licenses.
It's been moved, sir?
Second.
Second, by Alderman Byer, in discussion. Seeing none. All in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye, as Amanda calls your name, or if opposed.
Alderman Byer.
Aye.
Peachy.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Jean Adams, thank you. Resolution Number One Twenty-three, a resolution authorizing design engineering work for Rock River Landing Park. Alderman Peachy, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Upperman, fellow council members and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number One Twenty-three. Whereas R.A. Smith has provided the City of Jefferson three proposals for design services for Rock River Landing Park and the extension of a public street between West Wolcock Street and West Perner Street. And whereas proposed services include, one, demolition and rough grading design for park, two, Rock River Landing Park design, and three, design of public street extension including infrastructure. And whereas funds allocated for design services through the Knowles Nelson Stewardship Grant and recreational boating facilities grant, total of $110,500. And whereas additional funds associated with the design of a street extension from West Wolcock Street to West Perner Street have been allocated in the TID five fund. And whereas the Streets Committee recommends retaining R.A. Smith for design services associated with, one, the demolition and rough grading design for the park, and Rock River Landing Park design in the amount of $98,900, and three, design of the public street extension including infrastructure in the amount of $51,000. Now therefore, be resolved by the County Council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that adherent approves three agreements with R.A. Smith to provide design services for a cost not to exceed $149,900. And be further resolved by the County Council that the city administrator is authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the City of Jefferson after review by the city attorney. I would sum up.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Randall, in discussion. Bill, would you like to lead the discussion? Sure, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a brief breakdown of what, what these proposals are, and why there's three proposals. The grants, the two grants that we received, the Knowles Nelson Stewardship Grant and recreational facilities grant, basically included the design services included in the first two proposals, that's demolition and rough grading design for the park. As you know, the existing site out there is, still has concrete foundations and asphalt. That site needs to be removed, those need to be removed as the first phase of the project, and a rough grading plan would be used to be able to rough grade the park itself from that, from that design. A lot of people have asked the reason for the piles of material and where that came from out on the east side of the property out there. That material actually was generated from the stormwater detention pond that the city to build, and we used the spoils from that to be able to, be able to use for fill on this project, assuming that we had reached this point. So, it's going to save the city some significant amount of money to be able to not have to import material into the site. The second proposal is the design of the park itself, and that's going to include the bathrooms, boat facilities, there's a boat ramp, there's parking lots, trailheads. We've got lighting included in there as well. So, as part of the, those two stewardship grants, we estimated the engineering to be around $110,500. The proposal that we got from R.A. Smith was under that at $98,900. And then the third portion, which was excluded from the grant, was the city's commitment to be able to build a public street. More than likely, it'll be an Elizabeth Street extension from Wolcock Street up to Perner. The design of that is estimated $51,000. All of these are going to, we are authorized to be able to start spending money at this point. So, what we'd be doing is starting the design to be able to get, not contracts, but bids and specifications to be able to start the construction of the park, roadway, infrastructure, later this year with a plant construction completion of 2020, which is consistent with the grant requirements that we've submitted. Thank you. So, any other questions, Bill? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution Number One Twenty-three, please signify by saying aye, as Amanda calls your name, or if opposed.
Alderman Peachy.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Jean Adams, thank you. Resolution Number One Twenty-four, a resolution canceling and rescheduling the April second, two thousand and nineteen council meeting due to the spring election. Alderman Horn, we don't have a date at this point. Proposed date is April fourth, before we read this. Would you like to just take a poll and see if that's going to work? That would be two days after, Thursday after our regular council meeting. Of course, we're rescheduling that because in the end of the election, this will be a very busy place for both our staff and constituents. April fourth, Thursday? Okay. Jeff?
Do you want to go to April Fool's Day? Or...
I agree with him.
Celebrate that holiday. He celebrates that all year long. That's too recent.
Please.
Set agreeable. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, citizens of Jefferson, council members. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number One Twenty-four, be resolved by the County Council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, at the regularly scheduled County Council meeting of Tuesday, April second, two thousand and nineteen, is hereby canceled and rescheduled for Thursday, April fourth, two thousand and nineteen, due to the spring election.
Aye, so. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Byer. And there is no discussion. Can I speak? Can we, can we, on a voice vote, all in favor of rescheduling to April fourth, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Jean Adams. Thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion adjourned in closed session pursuant to Section nineteen forty-five, parentcy of the Wisconsin State Statutes, to consider employment and compensation. So, Mr. Tully?
Second.
Second by Mr. Horn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Okay. We're adjourned in closed session, and we will recon-